I'm calling this meeting of the Town of Silver City Council to order. Would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Like to welcome everybody here tonight. Chief Patillo, thank you for coming. The first item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Do any of the councilors want to make changes to the agenda? No changes. We'll move along to the next item is council comments. First is Councilor Beddison.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank town staff again for their excellent presentation at the last meeting. I've had a lot of comments about that and how it was clarifying for a lot of people about how we use our resources and the sorts of things that we're looking at in terms of annexing or annexation potential and how it just reaffirmed everything that they thought that they already knew, but it just really clarified that process and, like I said, how we use our resources. So, thanks again to the town staff for doing that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Connaughton.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things. The first one is, a couple of months ago, I asked for the tourism and ad people to come and do a presentation because I still haven't seen anything that they've done in a year. So, and you said after legislative session, they might come, Mr. Brown?
They're scheduled for the next meeting.
Okay, excellent, because I'm very curious as to what they're doing. I feel like I'm beating a dead horse here, but let's talk about traffic downtown. It's gotten out of hand. I mean, seriously, every time I go downtown, I watch people making U-turns in the middle of the street and all kinds of crazy things. I don't know if there's anything that can be done. I saw a police officer today parked a little bit above 7th, 6th and 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 6th[318.51]
They want to do is give up that southern airspace that's down in Texas. That one will probably go away and of course the other two are still there being used by Holloman. In the gray there next to Holloman Air Force Base, which is next to those red airspaces to the west, you see White Sands Missile Range. That's very much also being used by Holloman Air Force Base and others for training. The black airspace is over on the east side of our state. They are used by Cannon Air Force Base. Those are not being looked at right now for optimization. The yellow airspace that you see there is controlled by the New Mexico Air National Guard out of Kirtland Air Force Base. It is not currently being used because the Kirtland, the Air National Guard for New Mexico does not have any aircraft assigned. We're logged only three states that does not have any aircraft designed. The F-16s that were stationed there were removed during the base realignment and closure process of 2010. So that is an issue that they don't have any of their own aircraft and we can talk about that separately if anyone is interested in that. But that airspace is something that is being looked at right now. The blue airspaces are being controlled by the Arizona Air National Guard specifically out of Tucson. And I'll talk more about those as we go through the presentation. And the little gray area that spans the border of New Mexico and Arizona is also an airspace that's mostly being used by the Tucson Guard. Here you see a map. The yellow airspace that we talked about is in the upper corner there. And the airspaces that you see extending back into Arizona are again used by the Arizona Guard as well as others. There's also a low-level route that I'll talk more about that comes into lower Grant County. We've received some comments from some folks down in Lordsburg about low-level flying and they are experiencing that because of the low-level route that's in the south there, going into that blue airspace in the very far south of the state. So these are other airspaces. The hatched area, for instance, that you see just south or I'm sorry, west of Silver City is also being used by the Tucson Air National Guard. One of the things to know is that there are other units that can actually schedule to use these airspaces if they're not being used by the Guard in Tucson. And those would be scheduled through the Tucson Air National Guard. And that is something that is happening and I'll talk about that a little bit later. So let's talk just briefly, very briefly, about the airspace optimization for Holloman and I'll give you a little bit of an update on that. Some of you may have heard this, but I'm sure not everyone has. As you know, there are various alternatives that are being considered for Holloman Air Force Base. The first is to expand the Talon Military Operations Area, which is down near Holloman. That's one of the red airspaces that I indicated on the map. That's Alternative 1. Alternative 2 is the one that's up here in our area, which is to expand that yellow airspace called Cato and Smitty and add a third military operations area called Lobos. And that one would be to the west of Silver City. One of the things about that is we're not sure exactly where that airspace would be located and I'll show you on the map in a minute. There is also a third alternative that has come up and will be included in the draft environmental impact statement. This has not been divulged to the public yet. It will be included in the draft DIS. So we will not know exactly what that is. I have some thoughts about what it is, but I don't know specifically what it is because again, it has not been communicated to the public yet. And then Alternative 4 is always included as the do-nothing alternative and that one has to be evaluated as well, although it doesn't satisfy the requirements of Holloman. This is the expansion of the Talon airspace, which is down near Holloman Air Force Base. If you remember, there was a little notch out of it in the south. It's been expanded both to the south as well as to the north and northeast. This is Alternative 1 that's being considered for Holloman's flying. Alternative 2, you remember, is the expansion of Cato and Smitty. That northern portion that's outside the border is actually being considered to be given back to the FAA. And of course, there's an expansion to the southeast of that airspace as well as the possible establishment of the Lobos airspace, which is that dotted line or dotted oval there that you see. The reason it's kind of dotted or hashed is because its dimensions and actual location are unsure as of right now. That was part of the scoping process for the draft environmental impact statement. So when we see the draft DIS, we will know where exactly that would be if they establish it and how large it would be. You can see that it's really just to the west and northwest of Silver City. So it's very close in and of course, over the Hila. My supposition here, just to share something that I think is possible, is that when I was down at the Military and Veterans Affairs Committee meeting that was held in El Lagoordo back in October, Colonel Campo, who is the wing commander at Holloman, was there. He was briefing the committee. And he stated that he had just been to a meeting with the FAA and the FAA had some concerns about the alternatives. My feeling on this is that it's possible that the FAA may have had concerns about Alternative 2. Because if you see the dashed line that kind of goes up into the northeast, that's a victim route, which is an FAA commercial route. And it's possible that Lobos may have come too close or the possibility of establishing Lobos may be too close to that route. I don't know that to be the case, but I'm supposing that may be the case and we may see a modification of that in the draft DIS. So that could possibly be something that is happening with that. As far as the process is concerned, we're hearing now that it's probable that the draft DIS will be released possibly late spring or early summer. So you know that that's May or June. It could be further delayed, but right now, the official line is late spring, early summer. I will, as soon as I hear anything about that, I'm tied in with the public affairs folks down at Holloman and the community engagement people. If I hear anything at all, I will let you know just as soon as I hear. As you probably know, there were a lot of spoken comments that were sent in from Silver City and Grant County in general after the meeting that was held in November of 2017 as well as the meeting that was held in April of last year. So a lot of comments for them to consider. It may have been one of the reasons that the draft DIS has been delayed. We're not sure. Of course, we know that there have been many resolutions and letters that have been sent in addition to the document that was sent by the town council here in Silver City back in the fall of last year. Also, you may know that recently, Hurley, Santa Clara, and Bear have also submitted resolutions. So those have gone to the Air Force as well. One of the things to know is that all of those should be taken into account in the draft DIS. And if not, we will have, when the draft DIS comes out, everyone will have 45 days to review the draft and make comments during the comment period, during the draft DIS stage. Then it will go on to the final EIS where all those comments must be taken into account. So there's going to be another round of comments once the draft DIS comes out, but it's really important to get comments in advance so that they can be included to begin with. And I think people around here have done that to a large extent. Any other questions about Holloman before I leave? Any? I think it's pretty clear and you know, this is kind of where we are, just in the waiting mode. As far as the Tucson Air National Guard, over at the International Airport, there are actually a lot of F-16s over there. As it turns out, they have three squadrons over there. They have a total right now of 80 F-16s that are currently stationed at the airport. And one of the things to know is that the Iraqi Air Force is there with 80 F-16s of their own. They are planning on leaving this month and they have not already left. So they are due to leave soon, if not already. I have not checked back in with them. But the Netherlands Royal Dutch Air Force is actually also there and they have 10 F-16s. So of the 80, eight are were Iraqi and 10 are from the Dutch Air Force. The mission of this unit is education and training of F-16 pilots and especially foreign military pilots. And you can see here on the slide that they have trained pilots from 25 different countries. So the ones that are there are only, you know, really some more continuation of their actual mission, which really is about training not only Air National Guard pilots, but also pilots from foreign countries. Their sorties do include the use of Chaplin flares. And if you remember, I showed you those blue airspaces where they are actually flying right now. And so they're actually dropping Chaplin flares right now. Now, one of the things to know is that they are aware of when we are under moderate to high fire danger here and they do not draw flares during that period of time. But they are used in other cases. Another thing to know about flares, just to say this, I think I may have mentioned this the last time I spoke to you. The flares that are used are actually training flares. They're not combat flares, which means that they burn for a shorter period of time. So say, three to four seconds versus much longer if you're in combat. It's still a fire hazard and yet they do burn faster and burn out faster and they are launched from higher altitude so as not to cause fires. And that said, you know, it's not always guaranteed that they won't cause a fire, although unfortunately, they have. But fortunately, in this area, we've not experienced that as far as I know. The canisters that come out from, you know, with the flares, basically, it's an aluminum canister that does drop on the ground and those are not retrieved. They are just basically out there and can be found by people. So that is a concern only if, for instance, there might be a dud flare that didn't go off, which still contains the flammable material. Otherwise, they are burned out and they basically land on the ground. The Chap similarly lands on the ground and sometimes is dispersed by the wind. That is a glass aluminum combination that basically is being used as a defensive countermeasure against radars. So they are out there practicing. Not every mission that they fly uses Chaplin flares, but they are using those. I did actually visit the Tucson Air National Guard, the wing commander over there, and we talked about this. They are using, the airspace is out to the west of us there, the purple one that you see there, the hatched one that you see there, as well as the blue one down on the bottom. And of course, they are flying on the low-level route that comes into that blue airspace there. That would be starting, they can fly as low there as 100 feet above the ground level. So they can fly pretty low through that low level, we're going into the tombstone airspace there and then flying back out through that same route to, back to Tucson. Right now, they are flying in those western airspaces, the airspace that are west of us, somewhere around 2,460 missions per year, sorties per year. So there's a lot of flying that's already going on out there. I'm having a little trouble with allergies tonight. As far as the Tucson Air National Guard is concerned, right now, because the Iraqis are leaving, they are, the Air Force is looking at the possibility of moving the Taiwan Air Force to Tucson Air National Guard Base and essentially in replacement of the Iraqis who are leaving. The Air Force is right now evaluating this move through an environmental assessment, which is a level below the environmental impact statement. It's not as rigorous of an evaluation and things like that. They've issued a finding of no significant impact. In other words, no significant impact of the Iraqis leaving and the Taiwan Air Force coming in. The draft EA was actually released last summer in June and the comments were due by the end of July. This was something that we didn't know about really kind of until the last minute. They did receive some comments from here in the area, maybe not as extensive as they might have because there's no way of telling exactly whether there would be any impact to this area until we actually see the final report. But basically, the Iraqi Air Force is departing with their eight aircraft and the Taiwan Air Force is expected to move in 14 aircraft F-16s to Tucson. So it's a little bit of an increase, but basically, they have their own assigned airspaces and are not expect to be, expected to be flying over the Hila, although that can always change. So right now, it doesn't appear that this will have an impact, but it will, you know, actually increase the number of F-16s that are at Tucson. As far as the C-130 flights over the Hila, these are the large aircraft that you've probably been hearing about. These aircraft are flying from various different bases and actually are coming into our area for training. And they're doing this mainly because of the terrain here. So basically, the recent C-130 flights, and you know, a lot of people in Memrose and other places have reported C-130s. They're coming from various different locations, but the ones that we experienced recently, interestingly enough, are coming from 139th Airlift Wing. This is the Air National Guard. It's an advanced airlift tactics training center that is in Rosecrans, Missouri. So I was quite surprised to find that out because my husband was actually born in St. Joe. And you know, so they are actually coming from there. It's a nine-day course, a recurring course, and so they come out periodically to fly over the Hila and into the airspaces to do training. And the reason they do that is because of the terrain. If you actually look at the terrain, and again, I don't have any special intelligence, my security clearance expired several years ago, but basically, if you look at the terrain here, it's very similar to the terrain in places, for instance, like Afghanistan. And so they're coming from Missouri, they're flying through the area here into the military operating areas. There was a recent sortie, or set of sorties that was reported on March 14th. And this was because they saw, the residents here saw an aircraft launching flares. And they were concerned because it appeared that the aircraft was outside an existing MOA, Military Operations Area. When I checked, I actually did some sleuth work. I, you know, we were in touch with the folks down at Holloman. They gave me a tip that it might be this unit. I contacted this unit through their website and they responded to me and gave me the information about these, you know, the unit and the mission and things like that. And so then what I did was, I had been emailing them about concerns about, from residents here. So basically, they are saying that they were in a military operations area, not outside, but there are residents who are disputing that right now. So the concern is to get the information from the residents who have that information and to pass it to this unit so they can actually take a look at it. I'm awaiting a response from this unit also to understand their scheduling. If this is a recurring course, how can we understand their scheduling when they might be back again so that at least we're informed about what's going on? I am willing to gather any more information. If you have residents that are reporting anything to you, I'm willing to work to gather this information.
Counselor Amesman?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I have a question about that.
Yes.
And that is, if a resident actually sees an aircraft that seems to be flying low and they think it's out of the space, what information should they look for that they can be the best reporting information?
Probably the most important information. There have been many reports that have been made about F-16s and other aircraft, military aircraft flying over. One of the most important things is to get the exact location because what's happening is people are saying, well, it was sort of in this area or sort of in that area. Well, it's really hard for the Air Force or the Air National Guard to respond to those kinds of reports. So what we want to do is get accurate information. If it's a large aircraft and someone can get a picture, obviously, that's helpful. But one of the things that I have said also is, and it's not required, we can track it down, it's a little bit harder, but if someone can get the two tail letters, not the numbers, but the two, two tail letters on the aircraft, then we can quickly identify where it came from. So aircraft are coming from various places, but basically, those are the things we need to be reported if residents are concerned, citizens are concerned about these aircraft.
So of course, we need to whip out their cell phone, access the GPS, take a photo if they could, and if they had binoculars, see if they can get those tail letters.
It'd be great if they could. But especially the location because once we can pin the location, then we can probably figure out exactly where they are and what they were doing here and then track back where they were from. And then if there are concerns like, for instance, flares, you know, in this case, there was a report that flares were being launched outside an MOA and that's something that needs to be looked into. I will say, and again, I'm, you know, not defending the Air Force at all, I'm just reporting that the Air Force on these aircraft have computers that have the maps on them and things like that. So they think they know where they are, you know, by the maps that they actually have in their computers and of course, residents are reporting something else. So this is something that does need to be resolved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So there, you know, there are a lot of military flights that are over this area. One of the last things I want to talk to you about just very briefly is the low-level routes that exist. So the blacked-in areas, the black outlined areas are the airspaces that we've been talking about. The red areas are the low-level routes that exist already over the Hila. And if you look closely, you can see that the dark red line is the route. But the route is actually expanded by the extent of the flying that can be done. So they can fly at so many miles either side of the route. And there, so there are lighter red lines that outline the route, you know, where the bounds of the route are. You can see that those routes are basically north of Silver City as well as north of the mining district. And also that there are avoidance areas. So the low-level routes come in at 100 feet above the ground to 1,500 feet above the ground. They can fly anywhere in those parameters. But also, you see that over the Hila wilderness area, there is an avoidance area. So they must be above 1,500 feet to fly over the wilderness area as well as two other areas on the sides of that avoidance area, which are at 500 feet. So they have to make sure they know the route. And when they schedule this route, they schedule this through Holloman Air Force Base and Holloman is supposed to give them a briefing. And basically, users or military units from all over the country are able to use this low-level route if they schedule it. So I just want you to know, there is some low-level flying that's already going on over the Hila and it's basically on this low-level route. So one of the things to know, and this was the low-level route that I was just talking about, the other was the airspaces basically. So you can see the dark red line that comes in and goes back out. They're basically following the route. Another thing to know, as I said, is that there are users from all over the country that can come in on these routes. And the last thing, I mentioned already, the route that goes into the southern airspace, that would take into account things that are happening actually south of Silver City. So in summary, you know, a lot of southern New Mexico is already used for military training, including over wilderness areas. And of course, the Tucson Air National Guard Base is the main source of F-16 flying that's already happening over the Hila and they're basically training in those airspaces out to the west. The Headquarters Air Force airspace optimization project is going on. Soon as I know anything about the draft DIS, I'll let you know. We talked about the C-130s and again, I will be glad to gather any more information and will share anything I get with you on those low-level flights and what's been happening on those. And of course, we talked about the low-level routes, just to be aware that there is some very low-level flying, however, it is on the routes and those are restricted to certain areas. But one of the last things to know is that any aircraft, military or civilian, can transit this area on a visual flight rules flight plan. So they can fly anywhere they want as long as they file a flight plan with the FAA. So we may be seeing military aircraft just transiting because part of their responsibility is learning cross-country navigation. So this is another thing to consider. Excuse me. And I really, again, I want to thank you for your attention. I hope I didn't go too long tonight. And I will be glad to entertain any clarifying questions or if you have questions after I leave and has my contact information, don't hesitate to contact me. I'll be glad to help.
Any questions or comments from the council? Thank you very much, Colonel.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda that requires action is under the new business. And first item on the new business is...
Staff reports.
Do we have any staff reports?
Huh?
Yeah. Were there any staff reports?
No.
No.
Yeah, I would have asked him if there was.
Just checking.
The next item is, under new business, is 11A, is the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2019-12, a resolution amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019, and for municipal purposes in the town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating funds thereof. Mr. Brown?
As you know, we've, over the last few years, DFA has required that we make temporary transfers to ensure that when we submit our quarterly report, we have no negative balances. It's almost impossible to do that because we have so many grants that are on a reimbursement basis. So we always have a negative in those funds. So what we're presenting with you today is, one, the first budget adjustment is actually a, it will be a budget adjustment that will remain in effect from now on. And the second one will be a temporary transfer. I just wanted to keep them separate for record-keeping purposes. But the first one is, basically, we're transferring funds to the 32nd Street Overlay Fund that we completed, we completed the overlay earlier this year. As you might remember, we budgeted the funds and it was, all came out of talent funds. We, the project cost a little bit more than what we had available. So this is going to increase the budget by only $140. But we have to do that because of the DFA requirements and the state auditors. So that's that one. And then the second one is the CDBG, is the 2018 CDBG project that was completed earlier in the year. That had an overrun of about $25,000 and we're transferring money from Waters Sewer and the General Fund for that, to fill that void there. And with that, do you have any questions on this one?
Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. We move to approve of Resolution Number 2019-12, a resolution amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019, and for municipal purpose in the town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating the funds thereof.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second that as read.
Thank you. Motion, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Ann.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Amesman?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is 11B, the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2019-13, a resolution amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019, and for municipal purpose in the town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating funds thereof. Mr. Brown?
Mayor and Council, this is the one for the temporary transfers. So you'll see that all of the money is being transferred out of the General Fund and these are for the quarterly report that is, ends at the end of March. So this has already happened, actually. But we have to do the adjustment for, because we submit the quarterly report at the end of April. So we need to have this in hand, submitted with the quarterly report. Do you have any questions on any of these?
Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Connaught?
We move to approve of Resolution Number 2019-13, a resolution amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019, and for municipal purpose in the town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating funds thereof.
Thank you. Have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Amesman?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Counselor Benson?
Yes, sir.
Roll call, please, Ann.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Amesman?
Aye.
Counselor Benson?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is 11C, is the budget discussion and council direction for fiscal year 2019-2020. Mr. Brown?
Mayor and Council, the, what I wanted to do today was talk about, I've got all the revenue projections put together. Most of the expenditures budgeted. I've, this is the approach I've taken. I've put together all the revenue projections. The expenditures, I have no increases as far as staffing, staffing levels or operating. When we look at our largest source of revenue, which is gross receipts taxes, last year, we budgeted 9.47, $9,473,000 was the projected revenue. We're probably going to hit somewhere close to 10 million this year. So we've got a... So we've got around $600,000 extra, and we've been, I've been spending a little bit of that on equipment, equipment replacement so far. And as well as for some grant match, getting ready for some grants for this next year. So next year's projected revenue is based on the three-year average, the last three years, and we're still looking at 9.4, $9,470,000. So it's basically only a $30,000 difference. The real difference, and all of that, most of it goes into the General Fund. The big change, as far as the General Fund, is we've had a good amount of retired employees who have retired. So those higher-income employees are being replaced with new, lower-paid entry-level employees. So a lot of the increases in like health, health insurance has had a 5% increase. A lot of, all of that was taken care of through the, through the attrition, the retirement of those employees, and the money we saved on those employees. So the General Fund, like I said, we've got 9.47, $7 million budgeted for the General Fund as far as gross receipts taxes, five, $600,000 property tax, that's up from $560,000 last year. Franchise fees, $360,000 compared to $380,000 that was budgeted this year. And so, as you can see, the revenues are very close to what we budgeted for fiscal 2019. And we've been saved by the offset on the personnel cost, because personnel is about 82% of the General Fund cost from last year. If there's any special projects, or if you think that we need help in certain departments, please let me know so I can look at those departments and see if I need to adjust some staffing levels. And we do have some wiggle room because of the retirements and those things. And as, the next largest fund is the Water Sewer Fund. Consumption is down 9% from the previous year. So we are seeing a shortfall. Budgeted water, water revenue was at nine, at 3.7 million. We're probably going to see it come in about $3.3 million. So we are having to cut back some expenditures and stuff in the Water Sewer Fund this year. I am going to recommend, we have not had a rate increase in the last three years in the Water Sewer Fund. In fact, I think last year, the only change in the, in the Water Sewer Fund was actually a decrease in rates for out-of-town sewer or wastewater consumers. So I am going to recommend a 30 cent per thousand gallon increase to help offset the decline in consumption, because we still do have fixed costs that we have to pay, mainly debt service and electrical. Electrical is a variable cost, but it's still, it is our largest expenditure in the Water Sewer Fund. Do you have any questions on that? The final one is, well, not the final one, but the sanitation fund, we budgeted about $2.7 million. We're right on track to hit the $2.7 million. So I am not recommending any changes in rates in the Water Sewer Fund, and we are keeping staffing levels where they are. We're looking at some other things that we might be able to change later in the fiscal year. But I do not foresee any rate increase in the sanitation fund. This is council.
Council of Edison?
So you mean there's no rate, potential rate increase in the sanitation fund, because you kind of mixed up the two?
Yeah.
When you were talking, so the water fund, Water Sewer Fund, this potential 30 cent...
Per thousand gallons.
Per thousand gallons is going to go across not just local, but to everybody?
Yeah. As we've, well, you've been around long enough to know that we've, all the water contracts that we have...
Right.
Have built into those contracts that any rate increase applied to in-town users is applied at the same rate to the water associations. So everybody gets the same rate increase.
Okay, just making sure.
Unlike in previous years where out of locals, say, for instance, we had a 30 cent rate increase in town, out-of-town users would get a 60 cent increase. I stopped doing that like 10 years ago. I've only been increasing the same rate that we're increasing in-town residents. So it's not, when people say that out-of-town users pay double, it's not double anymore, it's more like 80%, 80% more than what in-town users pay. So that's where we're at with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The other two funds that people, the council has always been interested in is gas tax, that's street maintenance. As you know, we applied some property tax and gross receipts taxes. We bring in approximately $230,000 in gas tax, because it's not a percentage. So as, as the gas costs go up, we don't get a percentage of that, which would mean we would get a larger portion, a larger dollar amount. We only get 2 cents per gallon that is sold. So if, if gas prices go up, driving goes down, our revenue goes down. So, but we're still looking around $400,000, down from $420,000, which we should hit this year. So we're seeing a little decrease in maintenance there. Lodger's tax, last year we budgeted $280,000 in revenue. We're probably going to hit around $310,000 this year, but I'm still projecting at $275,000 is where I'm at. I try to be conservative with those things. And so, do you have any questions on any of those issues?
Council of Amensman, would you?
I would think that hopefully the lodger's tax income will go up when we bring the Airbnbs into the fold. We just maybe not, don't know how much.
I don't know how much, and I don't really know how much it's going to cost us to get them into compliance as well. So right now, I see any added revenue we get is going to be offset by compliance costs that, for now, anyway. So I really didn't build any of that in there right now. So do you have any direction for me, or anything you'd like to see? Capital Projects, I talked about Capital Outlay last year, I mean, last council meeting, which would be the Main Street Downtown Plaza. Well, let me talk about those. The Downtown Plaza, to finish the Downtown Plaza, I believe the budget is around $500,000. And so, as you know, we got $200,000 from Capital Outlay, $65,000 was awarded from Freeport, $73,000 was awarded from the Main Street Program. So we've got over $350,000, 300, yeah, $350,000 there. We have enough to do Phase Two of the Downtown Plaza right now, with all of those sources of revenue in place. We do have one final grant that we should know about in a couple months. If we receive that grant, we will be able to complete the entire Downtown Plaza project this next fiscal year. The sidewalk, oh, Sissy's gone. The sidewalk project, yes, we do have, if anybody's looked at the cement pad that we put down for the kiosk at the visitor's center with the colored concrete, that is the same concrete color that we're going to use in the sidewalk project. I know downtown, there are some pieces of sidewalk that are different colors, and I can't say why those ended up that way, but I guarantee you that the sidewalk project has built in that color of sidewalk. And the tint, Southwest has it, so whoever the project is awarded to, we can make sure and get that color from them to make sure everything is in line. Again, that's a $406,000 project, we have $425,000 for that project. The concession stand bathrooms at Scott Park, we got 260. In the next month or so, I'm going to bring in a loan application for a fire truck, and I'm going to add $200,000 so we can borrow the remaining balance to complete that project again this year. The, what was the last, oh, Little Walnut, Little Walnut will be an ongoing project. We, they submit an application with Grant County to complete Little Walnut through the flat federal lands access program. And we were denied this, this, this next fiscal year, so we're going to continue to apply through that program. And we'll probably have a better chance once we have the, all the right way in place. We do have two applications for colonists that will, are up to be awarded at the end of April. I don't know what's going to happen yet. But those two projects would be Phase One of Ridge Road construction from Highway 90 to the street that, that's right past the curb, the storage facility right there off of Ridge Road. And so that's, that would be Phase One, sidewalk, curb gutter, bike lanes, and paving reconstruction on that. So we'll be doing that. Well, hopefully, we'll be doing that. And then the second one is the headworks at the wastewater treatment plant. And then we were awarded a 2019 CDBG, I think I told you guys a while back. We haven't awarded, gone out, we're still getting our, all our final approvals from DFA on that, and we should be going out to bid shortly on that project. So that is a street project at the far end of Chihuahua Hill, where they recently did the water line replacement. That's where we're coming back behind that. Then we have our, our two, I can't remember what program they're coming through, but the 12th Street realignment, 12th Swan Street, so it'll be from Alabama down to Gold Street, and then Swan Street from 12th Street to Highway 180. Basically, what's going to happen with those, that project is going to be a chip seal project. We're going to come in and chip seal the entire project area, fog seal it, and then come and re-stripe with bike lanes and the whole thing on that one. Then we've got the visitor's center project that will be going on this next year as well. And that one will be some sidewalk work, lighting improvements. The parking lot did not qualify, even though they did award it to us. We can't do the parking lot with that funding, so we're only going to be able to do lighting upgrades and sidewalk upgrades for that project. And then we do have the chip seal project that will happen this fall, in August, I believe it's scheduled. And that will be in, in the area, be, south of 32nd Street and east of Swan Street, in that area back in there. And there will be some on the south side of town as well, in that same side of town. We are busy, so there are a lot of projects going on, but is there any questions you might have of anything?
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, so we are keeping busy. The chief has already asked me for more cars and stuff, so all that stuff is built in on the site and stuff. So we're trying to replace two police vehicles every year for now, but...
Lots of exciting infrastructure projects coming up.
Yeah, there's a lot of things keep going on.
Keep working your magic, Mr. Brown.
We're trying.
I have a question, though. The state legislature addressed internet sales tax. At what point, if there is a point, do we begin to...
Two years, two years from now. They, it doesn't go into, they, they built into the legislation two years so they can work with Tax and Rev to implement the program. So it's not for two years. But there's something interesting that I was going to tell you. You know, when I, every month when I receive the gross receipts tax reports, you've got total sales, then you've got taxable sales, and then you've got match sales, which I believe is, is taxable sales without the hold harmless amount. But the, the difference between total sales and taxable sales has always averaged around 30% difference. So on average, over the last three years, we've been having, there's been about $350 to $370 million in total sales in Silver City. But since December's report, which would have been October's sales, that number went from 30% up to between 50 and 60%. So, so I don't know what the difference, that huge increase, because we're talking about over a period of a year, we're talking about $150 million in total sales that are untaxed. So I don't know if it's, if it's internet sales, for instance, Walmart, when you order something online and then pick it up here, I don't know if it's taxed. I've got a lot to look at. I think it's not taxable because it was an internet sale, even though it's picked up locally. And so the store might have to report it as a sale, but not a taxable sale. And so those are some things that I have to look at now with the new legislation and try to figure out, because, I mean, when we go to, when I saw those numbers, that huge increase on the total sales like that, man, that's going to be a lot of extra taxable revenue that we're going to see, but it hasn't been taxed yet. So I'm hoping that might be a little bit of internet stuff that's starting to show up as sales, but not taxable sales yet. And so...
Council of Edison?
So my understanding is that Tax and Rev has to work out a way where the tax is destination-based, which is not the way it's done right now. So the Walmarts and things like that through internet sales currently, because their headquarters are not in New Mexico, although they have stores here, it's like different from like the Dillards. It's really a strange thing, and that's the reason why it's going to take Tax and Rev two years to figure this out, apparently.
Yeah.
I can tell you that one of the apps that I use to sell clothing that, you know, I've barely worn as I lost weight, recently started reporting the tax to the state for every person. So they are doing that without us having to do it, because we're all considered merchants. I don't quite understand if it's destination taxing that they're reporting, or if they're reporting the tax to New Mexico. And it's not explained right now, but they, they did that because of, across the United States. It wasn't just New Mexico. They did it for everybody. And, and they said, we'll take care of this. So I don't know, like, if the person purchasing it is also paying a tax. I don't know. I just know that they're reporting it for me because of this merchant internet sales sort of thing, and that's what this app has decided to do. So I don't know a whole lot about it. I've been trying to find out information, but they're not really clear, except for the fact that they're reporting it for their seller.
One thing that might be happening, and this is all speculation, is that, for instance, Amazon already has a contract with the state to pay the tax. They're already paying the state tax, but they're not paying the local portion of the tax. So if Amazon does have the ability to report by location, they might be reporting by location, that's why we're seeing it. But they're not collecting the local sales tax, they are collecting the state sales tax. So that's might, might be why we see it on the report. But it's something that I'm going to have to work on through this next year, because we're not receiving anything. But what, what good news is that last year, I told you that I was looking to impose the first hold harmless increment of the gross receipts tax. This budget that I'm talking to you about right now doesn't include any hold harmless, so I'm trying not to impose that tax until the very last minute that we have to. So it's, it's not necessary right now.
Thank you.
So not proposing any income, I mean, taxes increased, just user fee as far as the water.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next item on the agenda is 11D, the appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. One application was received, and the Chair of the P&amp;Z and the Community Development Director both recommend the appointment of Lajo Sandor. If there are no objections from the council, I would like to appoint him to the P&amp;Z. There being no objections, I will hereby appoint him. I'd also like to point out that we have one more vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Committee. So if any of you know anybody, the community at large wishes to be involved in this very important commission, you can pick up an application from our town clerk, Anne Mackey. The next item, 11E, is the Appointment to the Trails and Open Space Advisory Committee. The Chair of the Trails Committee and the Community Development Director recommend the reappointment of Robert Shierwitz and Kenneth Sexton, and the appointment of Mortlin, is that correct, Anne? is that correct, Anne?
Martin.
Pearson, to the committee. If there are no objections, I would like to appoint these three people. Being no objections, they are hereby appointed. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion? Counsel Raymond Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Do you have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
I'll second this.
Counsel Ray, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, we are hereby adjourned.